In the future, we thought it very wise to have somebody helping us with this instead of going at it on our own.
How much did the Lakota study cost us again?
Boy, I know we got a grant to pay for at least $200,000 of it. Was it about 180 for the grant? So, yeah, but the total project, 350 probably for the total project and we got a grant for 225 of that.
Okay, and you're still gonna have to come back to us with your proposal for the actual contract with the engineer?
Correct. We sent out RFPs for that and the council would come back and approve a contract with whatever firm they thought had the best proposal. But keep in mind, this is totally different than the Lakota study that was done. This is more of a review of, you know, engineering plans for the actual toy that was going in where the Lakota study was conceptual wants and needs for the city once everything is in place. It's a little bit different than the Lakota, but you're correct, yeah, you'd approve whatever engineering firm we...
Does anybody therefore have any problem with setting $100,000 on the side from tourism for this project?
Did we have a motion already in there?
Then we have, then I'll ask for a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is about the city holiday lights?
Correct. Yeah, the next expanded level item, this came up in talks, I forget the exact meeting, but we were in a meeting with, I believe it was a couple of elected officials, I don't recall specifically, and the question came up about how the holiday lights look on and around City Hall. We got to talking and a few years, a couple of years back, I guess 2008 there, went out to bid and hired a company and weren't satisfied with the results. So at that time, staff sent some of the employees to, I guess, to school or to class to learn about the holiday lighting and how to install the lights, things of that nature. But I guess there was still some discussion that that wasn't the caliber of lighting and whatnot that the city should have on and around City Hall. And this number again, maybe a little high, but looking at what we spent four or five years ago with the results we got, we wanted to add a little bit more money, just A for inflation and B to perhaps hire what may or may not be considered a better firm or a higher quality firm to get the, to get the desired results.
What did it cost last year?
When we did this in 2008, it was around 11,000, 11,000 or 12,000.
In 2008?
Correct.
Last year?
Last year we did it in-house.
And do you have any idea what that cost, what the cost to the city was for staff doing it?
Uh, right around $9,000.
Nine thousand?
Nine thousand, correct.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley?
In no ways is this a, again, staff in any which way of how they decorate the city for Christmas and about the lights and everything. But compared to other towns, we were terrible. I mean, for the, we have the lights down, decorative lights going down Wooddale Road. There's no reason we could get better, we can't get better lights and do a nice job on that like Itasca does in the dark. It looks beautiful down there. And Itasca, you go to Rosemont, I know they're a different ballgame and stuff, but their town looks great. So, I'm in favor of spending the money on this. Because at Christmas time, people are driving around looking at houses, towns and everything else. No one's gonna remember Wooddale.
No.
Not when you have plentiful lights.
But if we had a Ferris wheel, we could put lights all around. Yes, Alderman Winger?
I have a question, then I'm gonna make a motion. But does a suggestion, does it actually entail going down Irving and Wooddale Road on those lights as well, or is this just City Hall?
Well, that's a question I, that's a question I...
Mr. Manager?
In the past, when we had done this, what we do is we talk to a firm, we scope it out for all the areas that we want to cover, all the key areas. So when this number was conceptualized, it was thought of not just City Hall, but other key areas, whatever we determine them to be in the city.
Okay, okay, then I'm gonna make the motion to accept the holiday light expanded item in the tourism budget with a budgeted item of 20,000.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, there was one opposed? Okay, still carries. Next item is General Capital Projects Fund. Yes, sir, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, actually, there was the added item out of the council meeting last week.
Yes.
For the Historical Society. I know they were here requesting some additional funding for their renovation project they had done. And I believe, and looking at my numbers and looking over the notes from last week, this was kind of what was conceptually pitched, was doing 5,000 a year until they had raised enough funds to cover the remaining costs that they had. I believe they had approximately 17,000 and change still left. So assuming that they get no monies between now and then, that'd be three years from the city and then a partial amount in a fourth year. But obviously, we would want to check every year about their fundraising, you know, so we're not just blindly giving the money if they've raised money in the interim. So I believe this captures the spirit of what Alderman R. Wesley was going for last week. We put this together for a conversation for tonight.
I think Alderman Wesley would like to say something?
I'd like to add this into the budget as stated on the slide. I'll make that informal motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alderman, Mike?
Bud, is there any way you can tell us what the fourth year at a lesser amount is, you know? Don't have it added out or drawn out yet?
Yeah, going off of the notes from last week, it was, I think, $2,000, $2,081 or something like that.
Is anybody know when the last time they did something like this? When's the last time they asked for money in this amount, or they revamped their whole society?
They never.
I don't, I don't recall any time I've been here. The first time they asked, they always asked for between $5,000 and $6,000 a year to run the place. But the first time I ever, they've ever asked for complete some money to help for what they've done. They painted all the buildings and stuff like that.
That's true. That's correct. Alderman Wilson? Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion and we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is to increase that amount for three years, or maybe four years, by another $5,000 to make up the difference of the 17,000-some dollars that they are behind. Is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
Quick point of clarification, we did check briefly with Attorney Bond on this. We can only commit to one year at a time due to their fundraising efforts. So we can't specifically commit, we can come back every year and reassess it, but we can't just in a blanket movement, commit to all three years.
So the motion would be to, this coming year, to give them 11,500, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Wesley?
Let me add into this, 6,500, just to make it clear here, is for the events that they have there. This is for the community and what they, when they sell their hot dogs and stuff like that and when they do the hay rides and stuff like that, those are their fundraisers, that's how they raise the money. They turned in all their CDs on this to paint the barn and everything, to make sure it looks nice and stuff like that. If the council decides not, that they don't want to do this, I mean, maybe we shouldn't have a Historic Society. I mean, if your vote's gonna be no, and then, that's how I feel about it.
Alderman Lazara?
The no vote has nothing to do with the fact that we don't want a Historical Society. The no vote has to do with the fact that we're giving an organization 5,000 every three years. What, what my question would be is, why aren't we giving other organizations who need money, as well as the Historical Society, 5,000? I mean, I sat here last week and we talked about it for maybe a half hour, about 120. Same thing, organization that needs money. VFW, they need money. I'm just not sure what makes them any different than any other organization that is in our community that needs money. To me, if we do this, then we should do it for all of them.
Alderman Woods?
Brad answered my first one, and that was if we could commit a three-year deal. My second item is gonna be similar or parallel Alderman Lazara's. I have the same, where do we stop with the organizations then? If we're gonna give, we already gave them 6,500, you know, and now we're gonna give them another 5,000. As Alderman Lazara said, there's a lot of organizations that would love to come in and get 5,000 a year from us, as opposed to 500. On top of where we already give them 6,500 dollars a year. So my, my big problem with it is where do we start and stop? And then what makes them more special than any other organization in town?
I guess that's why we have a budget and we're voting on it. Mr. Mayor?
Just for clarification, 6,500 is like Alderman Wesley said, it's for all their functions, just like the parade, we give the VFW money to host the parade for us. 5,000, right, the VFW, I know, talking to Mr. Beautise, so they can make payments, they had to break one of their CDs. I know they would like to get 5,000 from us. Addison, I went to a function in Addison where basically the city kind of stood behind it in some type of financial capacity, called the Mayor's Ball, where all the organizations in the community Rotary Club, Lions, they all participated. They raised 80,000 the last two years in a row, and all those organizations split the money. We could approach all our organizations and get them coordinated somewhat, let them get started, and see if they'd like to go in the same type of direction, and maybe there, we could help all at once instead of this 500, 500, 1,000 type of deal.
They'd still come to the council for the...
Actually, I'm gonna, because of this discussion that's been going on, I'm gonna approach Mayor Hardwig and see how they handled it over there. Just get a little more insight and pass it along. But I do know, the last two years in a row, they've raised over 80,000 in the one night, and those organizations all split the money. You know, it's a lot of work on those organizations' part, but...
Okay, just two more comments from Alderman Lazara and then Alderman Woods.
Mayor, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to see us pursue that. And I think this would help not only the Historical Society, but other organizations. So I'm definitely interested in seeing us pursue that. Thank you, Mayor.
And Alderman Woods?
I would echo the same thing to move forward on something like that, because we need to have a fairer way to distribute funds to different organizations. And they, they seem to be coming more and more frequent, and there's a larger group of organizations looking for funding. And every time somebody else gets more money than the other person, I don't know about anybody else, but I get a few phone calls going, how come, you know, we had to grovel for 150 bucks and somebody else gets 5,000? So we need to come up with a fairer way to distribute funds to these charitable organizations. Thank you.
Well, this will be for the future. Right now, we're voting on giving the Historical Society an additional 5,000 this year. There is a motion to such effect, isn't there? And a second?
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
We forgot somebody?
Alderman Winger?
So that does, that's five to three, so it passes. And we will have the mayor then looking into, oh, that'll be your responsibility then to form some kind of...
I will reach out to the organizations. First, I'm gonna reach out to Mayor Hardwig and see how they handle it.
Okay.
Get a little more information.
Alderman Winger, you wanted to comment again?
Not on what we just voted for, but I'm looking at that line item, and we're projecting to close out this current year at 6,000 instead of 6,500. And I'd like to see us pay the additional 500, so then we are even, especially since they need the money. Let's give them what we pledged.
Wait a minute, we just passed giving them an additional 6,500 plus an additional five. And what did you want to do?
I'm saying on this current year, in the budget, we budgeted 6,500, but we think we're only gonna pay 6,000. I'm saying pay them what we owe them.
We already voted though and passed it to give them an additional 5,000.
For next year, right, for the next budget year?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we'll double check that, because I mean, we paid them what we said we were going to pay them.
Okay, it's a typo.
Yeah, that's our best guess at this point. Yeah, there's no intent to not give them what we committed to this year, so...
Okay, thank you.
Settled?
Yeah.
Alderman Coles?
The only reason that they asked was they couldn't get enough donations to pay for it themselves. So they're still trying to get donations to pay for it themselves. If they get the donations, they said they didn't need our money. That's what they said when, they were right over here. She said that she was looking for donations. That's why there was only, on the third year, there was only a couple thousand dollars, because they had collected. So maybe by the time things come out, they may only need the first, first 5,000. Maybe they'll never need the rest. That's what they said, so... They, they are trying to get it by donations.
Okay, we've passed the motion. You want to go on to the next item?
Sure, that was it for tourism, unless there was anything else under tourism.
How, how much did we make from the hotel, from golf? You never gave a figure on that, the difference.
Alderman Wesley?
Sorry?
Alderman Wilson, I mean, Mr. Wilson?
You got promoted.
Yeah, I can pull that back up and recycle that. I thought that was in the monthly staff report a couple of months ago, but I can dig it up and recycle it tomorrow, the actual numbers and whatnot, so yeah.
Okay. Narcotics forfeiture fund?
Correct. This is the fund where we take in our portion of any narcotics cases that we settle. And then on the expense side, it goes to cover the costs associated with our canine unit. You can see, the chief has kept the expenditure levels the same from one year to the next. And again, it's to cover the costs of, of canine lycra down at the police department.
So, on the bottom ending fund balance, the restricted is 38,612, and that's what the ending fund balance is.
Projected for the end of fiscal 14, that is correct, yes.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I have one question on the narcotic forfeiture fund. When we seize a car, maybe Greg can answer this question. When we seize a car, because technically we could, if there's so much in there. My question is, and then we don't keep the car and we sell it out, where is that, where is that money going, may I ask?
Please do.
That money goes into here, if it's a narcotics case. Currently, one of the cars we have is from a sexual abuse case that was a seizure. That would go back either general fund or auction proceeds. But if we seize a car on a drug case, that's where this would go. More frequently, what we, what we seize is cash from drug transactions, and that's where this money primarily comes from. We have the money that was back in, I believe, 2012, there was a couple of vehicles included in that that were sold by the DEA, on a case we were involved in with the DEA. We currently have some large-ticket jewelry that we're still waiting for a sale on that may come in the next fiscal year. But with, with the federal agencies, we don't know when it's gonna come in.
So does that money go back into this account then? Is that how we funding this?
Correct, yeah. We, we have purchased canine, our dogs out of that in the past. We've used it for equipment. It's gotta be used for narcotics enforcement activities. And any of this money that is, that has gotten through either the DEA or the ATF or any type of the federal agencies, we also go through a federal audit on the use of those funds on a yearly basis.
All right, may I do one follow-up?
Please do.
So, more or less, if we, this funds a canine unit, the fund. So if we seize a vehicle, or several vehicles, and the money we get, could we purchase that vehicle out of this account?
The what account?
Could, this account we're talking about now, could we purchase the canine vehicle that he uses now out of this account?
Chief, yes.
I believe we can, and I believe we have done so in the past. I'm not sure what the last vehicle was out of, whether that was out of equipment replacement.
That came out of replacement, so why do we not?
Our fund wasn't as healthy back then. We're in a better position now. Traditionally, I think this fund floated in the 15 to 20,000 range. But now, you know, in 2012, we had a couple of nice cases that helped fund that and get the balance up there. So absolutely, as we look to purchase either a new canine in the future or a new vehicle, we can look at what's available. This money is for that, that type of equipment.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I think what, if this account keeps going, I think we would look at, I would look at taking the money out here to buy a vehicle.
That's perfectly reasonable, yeah.
Okay.
But we can't sell the drugs. Okay, Mr. Wilson? We finished with that item?
Unless there's any other questions on this.
Any other questions? Next item is General Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, we did have a couple of meetings on the CIP back in January. You will notice on page 180 of the book, the, technically, it's golden rod piece of paper. So it was a request to show all of the changes that came out of those CIP meetings. So we summarized the changes for fiscal 14 on this piece of paper. Obviously, a short while ago, there was direction to take another 50,000 out of here and put into tourism, which obviously is not reflected on this piece of paper. But just remember that one of the line items in here, we are gonna reduce the 50,000 for the signs. So we had a couple of meetings on the capital projects, there's the changes. So unless there's any specific questions or further revisions, nothing else on capital projects.
So we have a plus column in transportation? Of 130,000? The yellow sheet? The first item? Is that a plus or a minus?
130,000, correct. The transportation section was increased by 130,000, because we moved the engineering for the Ward Two Streets up a year for the 175,000. And then we moved out the Wood Lane Court Detention Basin. And the Addison Road Sidewalk Program, that 25,000 removal actually got put into this year. That's the project, the sidewalk and the fence that we're working on with the county and the forest preserve currently.
And the building and grounds, that's a decrease, right, 9,000?
Correct.
And miscellaneous, that's an increase?
Correct, that's for the GIS system for, that we're gonna pilot this year with the iPads that Alderman B. Wesley brought up.
I'm sorry. Warden Water and Sewer for Second Ward Streets, 40,000.
Correct.
That's an increase.
Correct.
For a total of 177,000.
Correct, that's in that effect on the CIP, correct.
Questions? Alderman Wesley, Eugene Wesley?
My, my question, I asked the Road Sidewalk Project, if I'm mistaking, the county is now doing it? Or are we still doing it?
Mr. Manager?
We're still the lead agency on that. The county's agreed to participate with us in the project and cost share with us in the project, but we're still the lead agency on that, and we will still be expending monies on that project.
Cost share on putting a sidewalk in?
Correct.
Okay. I received a phone call from some board member, which will be Paul Fittner, saying that the county was gonna put the sidewalk in at their cost. So, I mean, I understand it, but are we paying for the sidewalk? County paying for the sidewalk? The fence, what, I thought we only had to do the permit issue. I don't care, I think it needs to be done, but I just want to know.
We're talking about Mill Road, right?
No.
Where?
Addison Road.
Oh, the Addison Road. Oh, Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Yeah, there's multiple components to this project. I also spoke with Paul Fittner, and the county is likely to pay for the sidewalk component of the project, but you've still got bridge and other components of the project as well.
Oh, so this is for the fence and everything else? Okay. And they paying for the design too, or just the construction?
Go ahead.
No, we're, we're in charge of the design.
Mr. Mayor?
We're also going in front of the forest preserve to get a right-of-way easement, because it's their land. But they didn't sound like they were gonna give any money to the project, but the easement may come, and I think that meeting's gonna be coming up soon.
Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
What are we doing with Mill Road? Are we gonna absorb the whole cost? When we get to Mill Road? Yes.
Are you talking about the sidewalk?
No, the street.
Correct, when we get to the street on Mill Road, the portion... One second to look in the CIP real quick.
I just want to make sure we're not paying for the whole thing, because the forest preserve does own property on both sides, leading up to the bridge after Montrose. Or after Mary Jane Lane. Go ahead.
Correct. In fiscal 17, it's scheduled to be, part of it redone, from the 290 Bridge all the way to George. In two sections, 290 to Mary Jane and then Mary Jane to George, so two sections there. But obviously, as we're going through the design, if there's part of it, I'm not sure where the boundaries go there, if part of that's Itasca or running incorporated. We'll work with the different agencies to...
You said from Mary Jane to George?
Correct.
At the approach to the bridge?
Correct.
Who's gonna handle that?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to work with the other taxing bodies over there to coordinate with them. I can't tell you right now who would, who would cover those costs, but we'll have to reach out to those districts and work with them to accommodate that.
We may want to reach out ahead of time, so maybe they can put some money aside for it.
Certainly.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. A couple of questions. First...
A couple of questions. First, on the Salt Creek Trail, it's line 46059. We had budgeted fifty thousand for this year, and it looks like we're not going to do whatever that was. What is it that we're not doing and why?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, that fifty thousand, I believe, last year was for like a creek walk design-type scenario, and that was incorporated in general in the Euler study, I believe, a component of that. So...
So maybe we should, how about if we carry over the fifty thousand? Because I would imagine we would still want to do whatever that is. The Euler study is still in process, or is it closed out?
I can let John Forrest speak to that.
Okay.
Where he is. I know it's still in process. At what point, John would know better than I. But that was the idea, to put the creek into the Euler study, kind of scaled-down version of the creek walk, just look at it conceptually, I think. We could carry it forward if you want to get more in-depth, but again, I don't know how in-depth Euler's gotten with that creek component.
Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I expect to have a meeting with staff and Euler before the end of this month in preparation of bringing forward in April to the council, kind of where they're at with their plan study. And they have, they are incorporating some sort of a creek walk utilizing, you know, along Salt Creek. I haven't really seen the most developed plan yet for the creek walk, but I expect that'll be part of their plan.
And what are we doing with the houses that are still there?
Well, there's, I mean, we're waiting right now for final determination of some grant money from FEMA to purchase some of the homes that, you know, are along Salt Creek. But we would be utilizing, and we're going to also try and tie this in with the county's Oak Meadows Golf Course Project, and try and bring that creek walk all the way from Elizabeth up through to Irving Park, and then also go, hopefully develop something north, you know, around Grove Street, north of Commercial Avenue as well.
Okay, I'm confused now. You're talking about me, about the golf course?
We had preliminary discussions when, you remember the Oak Meadows?
Yes.
Work that they're going to be doing?
Right.
They're going to include a bike path going through that, and we also, in our initial discussion with them, talked about working with the forest preserve to make some sort of a bike trail, creek walk, something like that, up through the forest preserve north of Elizabeth as well, and just trying to tie this, tie everything together.
We're not talking about along Forest View. We're talking about through the golf course.
It will ultimately go up through Forest View. I mean, the county and, and the city own quite a few properties along there right now. You know, so we would like to, over the next couple of years, develop that into something that's usable.
Okay, but the fifty thousand that you're talking about isn't going to be used in this budget? Okay. Alderman Wesley was first.
Well, I, she might have a follow-up on that.
Yeah, I do.
If you want to pass to Alderman Winger.
Thank you. So, so my question is, on that line, Salt Creek Trail, we budgeted fifty thousand, we didn't spend any of it in this current fiscal year, and we're not budgeting any for next year. And so is that Salt Creek Trail the actual building of it? And if so, why aren't we, why aren't we budgeting for it?
Mr. Manager.
At the beginning part of last fiscal year, when, during the budget planning process last year, we had thought that this fifty thousand dollars for the Salt Creek Trail would be a separate component, not construction, planning of it or design of it, would be a separate component to the downtown master plan, which we had a hundred thousand budgeted for as well. So what ended up happening is with Ed Euler and Associates, we ended up getting, I'll term it as like kind of a sweetheart deal, got a really good price, and we incorporated the planning of the Salt Creek Trail within the downtown study that Euler was doing. None of this money's from last year, the fifty or a hundred was envisioned for a construction of anything. It was more of a planning concept right now. So moving forward, maybe next budget year, we would have to start budgeting some serious dollars to start implementing some of these plans, like we're doing with the Lakota Sign Plan. We spent money on the study, and now we started allocating for the actual construction of the signs.
Thank you. Okay, and then if I can follow up on one other question?
Please do.
So the, the other item in, in this fund would be, I see bridge improvements, third line down, under capital improvements. And then also, last item in that set is Irving Park Salt Creek Bridge. And in, in keeping with that concept of sign projects should be in tourism, well, these are bridge improvements, bridge work. I'm thinking that we could move that to the Road and Bridge Fund. Is that possible? And then if so, I think it's also important, so we can keep sight of this, that we have a very large bridge in the city of Wooddale. And while it's in good shape now, in the future years, we still have to plan for that and make sure that there's enough in that fund to cover the larger expenses.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ten thousand in the third line down is to do an engineering study on the pedestrian bridge over Irving Park there. You know, I suppose, you know, if the council wanted, we could, we could move that expense into the Road and Bridge Fund. That would, would not be an inappropriate use. A couple of years out in the CIP, we did have a couple hundred thousand dollars for prospective repairs based upon this study. That'd be like the only caveat I would offer to that. The bottom line, the Irving Park Salt Creek Bridge, that's the completion of the lights on, on the bridge over there that we're, we're working to get completed currently.
Now, wouldn't that come out of tourism?
That was predominantly funded by a grant we got from one of our state representatives, and the council put in just a little bit of additional money to get better lights and things of that nature, so.
So I'm going to make a motion to move a bridge improvements lined at 46033 to the Road and Bridge Fund.
For a total amount of what?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Mayor.
Brad, to go back to the Salt Creek Trail and the master plan for downtown. Now, if John says he's coming to us in April, and there's some simple landscape items that we can start to beautify our downtown, why wouldn't we have twenty-five or thirty-five thousand for some plantings or something? I mean, some type of minimum. Or are we going to just let it sit on the shelf for a year? That's kind of ridiculous.
Mr. Forrest, would you like to answer that?
Just wanted to confer to make sure we had the correct answer. Part of the, the study along that area is presupposing that the city owns all of the property along that area. And so part of the reason that there's not anything planned in here right now is, as you all know, we currently don't own all the property along there, and so we didn't want to do it in fits and starts along the way. So that was part of the, part of the reason, as well as not, you know, knowing any costs. If there's some, some small nominal stuff, you know, we can, we can, you know, find something for that. But the, the whole concept, dimmed my eye at once, was presupposing the city owned all of the parcels on Commercial Street.
So we paid for that study to find out whose property it was? Basically. Mr. Mayor.
Brad, basically, John, I think you can attest to this. So we own a 7-Eleven property. We own the old ball fields. That's property we already have, so... And from what I was told on the 7-Eleven properties, there's a big main electrical trunk going through there, and to move it would be astronomical. And I heard that it would behoove us to do some type of beautification right over there in that area, where we own it already. Wouldn't we be looking to improve that area this coming year? I mean...
Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, we hadn't really been planning on the staff of, let's start with landscape improvements and so forth in this area until we would, number one, see the final results of the Euler study. Number two, as the city manager said, I mean, we're really, part of this whole study is making the assumption that we own all of the property, which at this point, we don't own. And if we do have some funding that we would want to put aside, maybe we should use that funding to go towards accumulating the rest of these properties that we need. You know, right now, we've got quite a few landscaped public park areas along Irving Park, Wooddale Road section, the triangles, the different parks there. As you know, right now, we utilize the 7-Eleven property for parking during the Prairie Fest. So I don't know what we would want to put in there necessarily at this point until we get the whole plan, and I think city manager has a comment as well.
Mr. Manager.
I apologize. It's a rather important comment that probably should have been my first point.
Would you speak up?
I apologize. I, I had a rather important bullet point that I forgot to mention. That whole area is going to be torn up with the safety improvement coming in, in, in the spring of fourteen. So that's another, yet another reason why we weren't really planning on doing anything until, one, we acquired all the properties, and, two, the area is being torn up significantly. So it would then have to be re-landscaped if we started anything now.
How far is that going to extend?
That, that project is, that whole Wooddale Irving intersection is going to be under some massive construction in the spring of fourteen. There's going to be equipment everywhere. It's going to be a mess.
Does that take care of your question, Mr. Mayor?
For now.
Alderman Wesley.
Do you have one?
No, now you got to wait. Alderman Wesley.
The couple of accounts that I have, a question on 46036, Public Works Improvement. We only going to put thirty thousand dollars into that? I mean, what? Has anyone looked at that? Is, is that the Street Department building or, or what? Has anyone gone over there and looked at that building? I mean, I have bathrooms overflowing over there.
Mr. Wilson.
Certainly. That thirty thousand dollars that's in there, and I know this was a slight point of contention during the CIP meeting, is for some paving of the Public Works facilities. You know, things like repairing the bathroom, the flusher and stuff like that. All of the divisions within the Public Works have maintenance of buildings and grounds, line items, that they could take some of the more nominal items out of. In the years past, there had been about fifteen thousand put in the CIP each year for that building. And this year, for various reasons, there wasn't a lot taken out of there, and so the, the bigger picture items, I guess, were perceived to have been done, and like the flusher and the toilet and stuff could be taken out of the maintenance of buildings and grounds. The smaller, couple hundred dollar items wouldn't rise to the level of, of a capital replacement, capital improvement, just to fix a toilet or something.
So what you're going to say is those items to fix that building would come out of the CIP then? Am I hearing that right? Or you're saying it goes, it comes out of a different count? I, I just don't understand.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, when they redid upstairs and some of the, the bigger facilities, that came out of here. But now, the, the smaller items would just come out of the operating budget, just like they come out of the operating budget to maintain this building at this point.
All right, because I know at one time, we weren't putting a lot of money into that building because we were talking about possibly buying a building. Obviously, I don't see that happening in the near future here. I will tell you that that money, that building needs some major repairs, needs some fixing up. And I don't care where it comes from. Maybe you could put a list together and it comes back to the council. But I mean, I have washrooms that don't work over there. Sometimes they overflow. It needs to be, if we're going to keep that building, because obviously, we aren't going to buy a building, so let's spend some money over there and fix that building up. So you're going to have to readjust these numbers or wherever that money comes from. Maybe you got to go back and look at where the grounds comes out the money. Maybe we need up that. But we need to revisit that down the line or, or in this budget. The other item, if I may, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Item number 46042 to GIS, forty-six thousand dollars. What is that going to be entail, forty-six thousand?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The forty-six thousand covers the maintenance. I believe there was one or two projects that we're going to do. That also includes the iPads, the training, the turning on the, the application for the iPads. We had during the CIP, we had a pretty good listing of those costs from BMW to vet that out. But that does include the iPads, the training.
So iPads are coming out of this account? I thought it was from the yellow now.
It's the yellow sheet right here.
I thought it was coming out somewhere else.
It was on the gold, it was on the gold sheet right there in front, the sixteen thousand included the, the module that needs to be turned on and the iPads.
Okay, so you're going to take the sixteen thousand out of that? I have one more.
Go ahead.
Come 46058. The program for facial on the buildings that we talked about, are you trying to tell me we're going to put four hundred thousand dollars into this? And, and, and believe me, I'd like to see something done. But for me to sit here and put four hundred thousand dollars into this project, and I don't even know how much the businesses are going to pay into this project, and I don't think we've seen a final drawing of this thing, and I'd like to, like to know what the price tag is, and I'd like to know what the landlords are going to put in it. I mean, we put four hundred thousand dollars into this. What's it cost?
Well, as a matter of fact, what have we done for that two hundred and fifty thousand? Go ahead.
That was the architect they hired to do it.
Mr. Wilson can probably give you more accurate figures, but we haven't spent that two fifty, I don't believe, at this point. What the four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar figure represents, that's really would be broken into half, and that would be the city's portion of the contribution to the actual building facades of two hundred thousand. And then we're, you know, I got a rough estimate from the city engineer that it's going to cost the city about two hundred thousand to redo the Front Street parking lot and Front Street access to those buildings, which the city owns most of that property, that is the parking lot that those buildings on Front Street are currently using. And if we go with the last design that was presented to the city council, what that's going to entail is widening the sidewalks out to fifteen feet wide to make them more pedestrian-friendly and to encourage the use of the sidewalk cafe concept, that sort of thing. It'll also, if you recall, the architectural plans show for a covered walkway running in front of those buildings. Some of that's going to be on city property. And then also, we're going to move the parking to the north side, I'm sorry, to the south side of that parking lot, which is going to involve redoing curb lines, re-grading, installing new parking lot and so forth. So really, this four hundred thousand, two hundred would be towards the parking lot improvements, two hundred would be our contribution, our maximum contribution to the building owners.
Let me ask you this question. So if the business owners say, we are going to put out two hundred thousand dollars or whatever it may be that it could cost them, where does, where does this project go? Is this project dead in the water or, or what's the deal? I mean...
Well, I guess at that point, we would have to... Well, I guess at that point, we would have to reconsider our involvement, or our level of involvement in doing it. And at this point, both property owners still appear to be on board. We've run some of these rough figures by them. You know, they seem comfortable with that. You know, right now, we're waiting for structural engineers to finish up some work. We've had some issues with the Structural Engineers' report, so that the architects could finish their final architectural plans to enable us to actually get some hard numbers from a contractor of what we're going to be looking at. But again, just, we wanted to have some money there, so that we're able to go forward with the project if all the numbers work. If not, we'll have to come back to council and see where you want to go with it.
So we have nothing in writing yet?
We have no hard costs of, from a contractor, of what he's going to charge to do that work.
With the owners.
With the owners, again, until, once the architectural, once the structural engineer finishes his plans, and the architects can add that to the architectural plan, at that point, those plans, we've got them with an independent contractor right now, waiting for the final parts of those plans, so he can finish his estimate. Once we get the estimate of what we expect this facade renovation program to cost, at that point, we sit down with the building owners and figure out where they're going to get their source of funds, get them to agree, and then hopefully, we'll be able to move forward with it.
Alderman Wesley.
John, to my understanding, what you're just saying here, I'm, I'm understanding that they don't have any funding set for this, or the business owners? I mean, is there a dollar amount of what they're going to? I mean, I mean, we don't have a contract with these people. We're, we're, we're saying, okay, we got two hundred thousand here to do our part. I mean, do we have, do we have a letter of credit from a bank or something, that they could get funding? I mean, nothing against the business owner, but they could be blowing smoke.
I don't believe that they are. They could be, of course, but I don't believe that they are. They've both, at this point, both have indicated very strongly that they're committed to this project, that they're willing to, if they don't have the cash available, they're willing to borrow the money that it's going to take to finish it. I mean, it, you know, from what we've been talked about, the maximum sharing that the city would do would be fifty fifty with them. So once we get the hard figures from the contractors, I mean, this would be our maximum commitment to them.
But I've seen businesses come to this, to the building and zoning for a project, and everything looks nice, and they've gone through all the paperwork, and then nothing, because they couldn't get the funding. How much does it cost to get a letter of credit from a bank or something, some kind of commitment from them of something? I mean, how do we know that they got fifty thousand in the bank, or whatever they got in the bank?
Well, at this point, till we get some hard numbers, we don't really know what, I mean, do we get a commitment for, for fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand?
I'd like to get something from a bank of maybe a hundred thousand, something. So they have, I mean, we've never ran a credit report on these guys or anything else. I mean, they could be just surviving by a shoestring or something. I don't know that, unless you have their financials. I don't.
I don't have them yet.
Alderman Smaske.
Why we have to keep carrying on like this? No one asked the credentials of the business owners that were, we were supposed to bring the signs down on Irving. All you guys want to do is sit here and impede on not improving the town, as it's been for the last twenty years, so. Either come up with an answer, or call a question.
Alderman Winger.
I, I'd like to know, on the, on that line item, it says we budgeted for this current year two fifty and spent two fifty. Is that the case, and, or is it not? And if it is, what did we spend it on?
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in November, December, when we were putting the CIP together, you know, talking to Mr. Forrest, we didn't know at that point, we were going to have to get the Structural Engineer. And there were a couple of other things at that time, we didn't know that we've had to embark upon, which has slowed the process down some. So back when we started the CIP, we were optimistic that we would perhaps get to some construction this year. It appears that that's not the case. And I don't recall all the costs for the design, but certainly, we're not going to spend the two fifty this year. There'll be some numbers significantly less than that. We can get, we can get the, a hard number for you, you know, next week or so, looking through the GL. Like I said, we were optimistic at that time, we were, we were going to be able to move forward faster, especially with the Structural Engineering thing, it really slowed the process down, so.
Okay, so if I can follow up?
Go ahead.
Okay, so it, it looks like to me that there's this first phase, which is going to be significantly less than the two fifty, which we're already into. And then the decision of, okay, who's going to participate, is this feasible? So it's going to be a phased approach? Fair enough.
Mr. Forrest.
Yes, the contract with the architects, which we still haven't received their final billing, but their, their contract for the design of this project has a ceiling of ten thousand five hundred. So we still haven't received their final bill yet. Depending on how this thing with the Structural Engineer plays out, we may have to kick in a little extra money. But I mean, I'm not talking another five thousand or ten thousand, I'm talking maybe another fifteen hundred or two thousand, just to finish the design plans.
And I'm just going to round it to fifteen thousand total. After fifteen thousand, then we're at the decision phase of, what are the businesses going to do? What are we going to do? How much, and that sort of thing.
Correct.
Is that about right?
Correct.
Okay, so, so just for the rest of us to, I believe, understand, is that we're going to get to that decision phase very, very quickly once this first level is done, and then we'll know who's got the money to put up, and if they want to do it, if we want to do it. But we're certainly going to have a concept to whoever that landowner is at that time, and what we want to see there. So I definitely see value to this, and I, I want to see it move forward. And I do believe we're going to get to the decision-making on all parties very soon. Thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, just to recap, I mean, as, as John said, that's all we really spend, or will spend, maximum is fifteen thousand. As far as the dollars that we're trying to allocate, we're best guessed that those are the dollars. We weren't trying to advertise what we were willing to put up, so that the other side knows. But we didn't know how to allocate it until we get a price from them, which we thought we would have by now, which is why we had the two fifty in there originally. So I'm assuming, based on the conversations John and I have had, that probably in the next thirty to sixty days, we should have all that taken care of, and can then enter into those negotiations. But we have had conversation with both owners. I have personally mentioned those six-figure numbers, and they were both on board. There'd be absolutely no reason for them to tell me yes, and then back out of it when we're actually giving them money. Just doesn't make sense as a business.
Mr. Forrest.
The, the main reason this has slowed down is the Structural Engineer that we were going to use originally decided to greatly inflate his fee, which we thought was unreasonable. So now, we're going with a different Structural Engineer. I mean, we've, two of these other Structural Engineers we contacted weren't interested in getting involved in the project. A third one that we contacted was interested in the project, but is semi-retired, so his license is no longer active, so. You know, we're trying to be prudent how we spend the money, but we still need somebody qualified to finish these design plans. As I said, the architectural plans are with a contractor who's gone as far as he can go in developing what the price is going to be for this, until we can get him the final drawings from the Structural Engineer.
Any other comments? Please continue. I know we're under Robert's rules, but to save some time, it's getting late. Don't, you know, acknowledge, Mr. Chairman, just find that, go ahead and talk, okay?
Understood. So unless there's any other questions, I'll see if, going on the equipment replacement. Equipment replacement is where we purchase, aside from the vehicles in the water and sewer fund. This is where we buy the vehicles for the governmental type activities for the street department and the police department. You can see a brief recap there of what we've purchased the last couple of years. So this year, we're two vehicles lighter than last year, which by and large is reflected in the decrease of almost a hundred thousand dollars from one year to the next. And you saw this briefly in the CIP document, which we've since pulled out on one eighty-four and one eighty-five, the five-year fleet replacement schedule.